what we did for police and I'd ask you to bear with me for a few slides because I believe that this is a good way to begin this discussion because the public safety pay plan is different from the pay plan for general employees so I've had a number of conversations with individuals from the public safety pay plan as well as police and fire just in general and I will tell you the chart in front of you is is the bread and water when it comes to public safety it is this step plan that took years to develop it's been where we've been for for decades and I will tell you changes to these And I will tell you, changes to these two graphs are probably what causes much of the concern when it comes to compensation for police and fire. So, police is at the top, fire is at the bottom, and this is what we call the step system. So, whenever you see a box which is white, it really represents a 2.5% salary adjustment. When you see a yellow box, it represents what would be a 5% salary adjustment. So, 2.5 and 5%. So, if someone was in, let's say, step, well, let me start off. So, if I were three years into the police department, I would be at step four, which would basically say, I would make $50,000, 347. Okay? So, that's when we talk about this, the step plan. And if you talk to some folks from public safety, they say, "That's our contract. This is, if I do a good job, if I work hard, then I should go into that next step when my merit date comes about." The other thing I'd like to say, that there's another piece to this, which is what we call the merit adjustment. Okay? So, there's, that is an adjustment to each of those steps uniformly that we do, market adjustment, I'm sorry, that we do annually. So, when we talk about a 1.5% adjustment, we adjust every step by 1.5%. So, therefore, someone at step four going to step five would say, "It's yellow, I'm going to get 5% plus I get that market adjustment," and thus you get 6.5%. That's not the same thing for someone who's at step nine because it's a white box, therefore it's worth 2.5%. So, with the market adjustment, it would be 2.5 plus 1.5, which is 4%. So, thus, this whole concept about steps, and as you can see, currently, so I'm not using what was proposed in the budget, but currently, there are 12 steps for, 13 steps for police officers. And for firefighter one, there are five steps, firefighter two, there are 10, and firefighter engineer, there are nine. So, that's the step system. And I will tell you that I tried to do in two minutes, one of the most complicated things I have ever dealt with. And one of the things that we have talked about is that we're at a desire that when you approve a budget on the 11th of June, that on the 12th of June, we're talking about a better way of doing this because this is not a great way to compensate people. And I will use, for example, during the Great Recession, two steps didn't occur. So, no salary increase, and the way that you pay people in police and fire is through the steps. So, the way you get paid is moving from one step to the next step. And this whole concept of topping out, like if you were on step 13 for police, or if you were a firefighter two on step 10, all you would get would be that 1.5%, okay? So, when we went a couple of years of not having any increases to zero, it was the same as someone saying, "I didn't move along in my step process," whether you want to call it seniority, whether you want to call it the contract that if I work hard and I do this, I get to move. And that's part of some of the problem that I've inherited, and that's been a history of changing the steps, converting them, making them longer, making them shorter, changing them from 5% to 2.5%. So, so that's the step system. So, one thing I'd like to add to that is that if you start to think about police, 80% of police officers do not make any of those numbers, okay? That's because 80% of police officers get some type of incentive pay. So, incentive pay could be, as you see on the bottom here, 5% for a second language training officer, a two-year degree, or 10% for a four-year degree. Same thing with fire. We have roughly 60% of firefighters don't receive something that's on this page because they also get some type of incentive pay, whether it's second language, hazmat, search and rescue, dive, aircraft, second. So, conceptually, this is the step system, but there are other ways to have more money that you take home through incentive pay than the step system. So, let's go to what we try, I'm sorry, what we tried to do in the proposed budget, okay? In the proposed budget.
Before you go to the proposed budget, one, the staff is making copies.
Thank you.
But I want to make sure that before we leave current, that everybody understands the concept. I, I, I think Mayor Protem said to me, you know, "Well, you've been doing this, so you know it." And I'm like, "Not really?" I wish I could say that my memory retention was that good. And I think it's very helpful for everybody to understand how it works. So, let's go back and make sure that any questions on the current pay plan and how it works in police and fire are addressed by the council because this is the foundation for the next, the way it's being done. As you say, people see this as a contract. Okay. I had Lock, Mr. Eggleston, and then Mayor Protem.
I know this has been discussed before, but a lot's been discussed, so it's all, want to make sure I'm remembering correctly. Can you bundle those incentives or can you only, for instance, a four-year degree, a second language, and dive specialty? Could you bundle that for 20%?
You just can't bundle it so.
Yes.
Yeah, you can't bundle it, too, you're in a four-year degree, but you can bundle anything else.
Yes.
And so, you could potentially do all of those and keep adding 5%. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
So, Mr. Manager, first, thank you because we, we did pivot in the budget discussion to ask you to look at a full pay plan versus, originally, this was really about retention for police officers. So, thank you for doing this, and because of that, now we're sort of trying to catch up and understand it, sort of the Evelyn Woods approach to pay. But are the steps, is that merit? So, or is this contractual that you've got to give everybody, no matter the economy, no matter their performance, that you've got to give everybody that base increase from step to step?
So, and I may have to phone it for in. Clearly, if you're not performing, you're not moving right.
Why, that 98.8% of four.
Okay.
Okay. So, it's sort of presumed really that this is there, but I would also think that we've had situations, 10 years ago, whatever, that the economy was such that nobody moved up a step. So, the 1.5%, because we got a lot of emails about that, was presumed that you'll get that regardless.
So, let, let me make it even better. So, if we go to FY 2012, there were no increases. And so, when someone thinks about, if I'm on step four as a police officer, and I'm part of that 98% that do my job and do it well, I believe that I'm going to not only get 5%, but I'm also going to get that 1.5% also.
Yeah.
So, I believe I'm going to get 6.5%.
You believe, but that's not necessarily.
That's not necessarily the case.
Trivial.
Right. So, exact, last year, as a matter of fact, we made adjustments to the steps that were 2%. So, it fluctuates from year to year.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Newton?
So, we were told, Mr. Manager, we were told that we were looking at practically, so generally speaking, across the board, about 6.5% increase for our police officers. Is, is that baked into this? Is, is that what this is?
That's on the next slide.
This is the current.
This is where we are today.
I just wanted to make sure of the framework.
Okay.
Everybody understands the framework, I think, not, and then he's going to go into numbers.
Okay. And second question, so it's my understanding that this was presented at the Public Safety Pay Plan Committee yesterday?
No.
No?
Not this.
Okay.
But I'll get to that, I'll present it.
Is this completely, so, so what would be presented? Is this something completely new being seen by, by, you know, our firefighters and our police officers?
Sure. So, not the slide, but thank you for that. I should have said this earlier. So, this is kind of different for a manager after he or she gives council a budget. What was asked of me, I think it was item two on the list, was to come back with a different plan. So, I feel very uncomfortable coming back with a different plan because you're going to see it for the first time. And 12, 24 hours ago, people on the Public Safety Pay Plan saw it for the first time. But I thought that was important to talk with them first because I made a commitment to them that before I did anything different, that we'd have a discussion. So, about six slides in is going to be the, an alternative to what was proposed on May 7th. And the next slide is what was proposed.
All right. So, current, everybody understands the framework, and this is how we do it, as they say on some song. Let's go.
Okay. So, what we attempted to do, so what you have before you in the proposed budget is, I'm going to call it three steps that, that occurred. One is, A, we dropped the bottom step. So, while I thought dropping the bottom step was not really a big deal, in other words, what it would do is allow us to bring in recruits at this higher level with a degree, $50,000, there was something special about 50. For somebody who was at step five, dropping the bottom step actually brought him down to step four, even though they made more money. But this concept of losing a step goes back to, let's say, FY 2012. Losing a step, even though with more money, says that basically it takes me longer to get to top out, okay? But that was the concept, is, was take the bottom step out, and then anybody on step one, who would be the recruits, with a degree you could make up to $50,000. And then on step six, we would make that, that would have been a 2.5% step, but make it a 5% step. So, by making that a 5% step, adding 2.5, it rippled all the way up the chain. So, everybody got additional 2.5. So, if you were at step nine, where you thought you were only going to get 2.5, you got that additional 2.5, which got you to five, and because we had the 1.5% adjustment, it got you to 6.5. So, the thing that's very difficult, and I'm just going to say it, is that individuals will top out, okay?
Now, remind people, top out means you're at the top of the value calculated for the comparable comparison of the value of the job. So, topping out doesn't just mean, there's a, there's a, I hope there's a better term than topping out.
Yes, okay. So, I'm using, so, yes. So, let's go back one, and then we're going to.
Like cut off the top of the pine tree, right?
So, so somewhere in here, you, you kick butt, you do your job, you're great, you get to year 11, year 12, and you're at the top step. So, Mayor, I'm going to say top step, okay?
Thank you.
So, once, so the, something that we have to take into account that in police alone, this number changes, so I'm going to stick with the last number I got, roughly 35% of the police officers are at the top step. So, that, so that also means that if there's just an adjustment of 1.5%, that's all you would get because there's no 2.5 to get into or no 5 to step into, okay? So, if we flip back to the proposal, so the proposal was to also take that top step and make it a 5% step. So, every time you see yellow, it's five. So, that would impact 500-plus officers who had been with us for at least 12 years, making that, that top step. So, if you put that all together between July 1, 2018, and June 30, 2019, because there's this thing called a merit date, right? And the merit date is, depends on when your, your class graduated, and it's all over the map. You would get, everybody would get, with one exception, 6.5%. We'll get to that in the next slide. But I want to also say something about fire. So, in fire, we had a two-year plan in place that started last year. And this was just going to the second year of the two-year plan. And with that, what we would have is, it added a new 2.5% step to the top firefighter, engineer pay scale, and it also increased all fire captains by 2.5% to maintain the spread between, between engineering captains. And we're going to talk a bit about the spread, not only within police and fire, but between police and fire. So, what did this do? Next slide, please. What this did is, so let's just say a typical year, and maybe there's a better word than a typical year, but if we started off by saying, "If I did my job and did it well, and I move into that next step, from step one through five, you would have gotten the 5% plus the 1.5%, so 6.5%. From step six through 11, through 12, in that typical year, you would only have gotten the 2.5% plus the 1.5% to each the 4%. And then, those folks who had reached the top step, my new language, Mayor, would only get the 1.5. In the budget proposal, because we lopped off that bottom step, it was equivalent of being 12% for anybody in that first step. But, but basically, everybody else would, over the course of that year, have made 6.5%. Would they have made it on July 1? Absolutely not. Would they have made it by June 30? Would that reflect in their paycheck? Absolutely. There's a little anomaly with step 12, which, I think there were 28 people, that we just wanted to do right by them, okay? So, it's a little bit of adjustment we had to do, but, and maybe it's, I think it's about 28 people. But that's where we were, the bulk of the individuals over the course of, measured June 30, well, July 1 to June 30, would get that 6.5%. That's what's before you in the proposed budget.
Okay. So.
Well, can I bring up one point?
Yes, of course. I want you to finish, and we go back and look and talk about your recommendation and address questions there.
Okay.
I've got Mr. Drixx first.
I think the important thing is that maybe some of the emails that you heard, the phone calls you got, is that if you look at steps one through five, many people, I'm sorry, two through five, many people would have said, "Even without this proposal, I would have gotten 6.5 anyway. I would have gotten my 5% plus my 1.5." So, I think that's some of what you've been hearing, that, and I will say that it's something to think about because almost 70% of the people that I lose, I lose between steps one and six. So, upon reflection, I'm not sure that that would really address this piece of the retention. But as you looked at every other step, the, the proposal benefits individuals. Now, if we go to the next slide, what popped up in this conversation was this pay differential. So, I'm just going to take you right to the yellow boxes. The starting police officer and the starting firefighter one, and I'm going to, going to use the word traditionally, right, had been a 5% differential in pay, 5% more for the police officer versus the firefighter. And at top pay, right, top pay, there was also this 5% differential between the police officer and the firefighter two. When you start to look at the police officer versus the engineer, it even got a little less, 2.4%. The proposal that you have before you did have this parity grow, and that's the other issue that I think you've been hearing, that pay parity spread. Instead of this 5% traditional, it now is 10%. So, the alternative proposal that I'd like to present today still deals with police recruitment and retention, but it also addresses this parity between police and fire. And I would like everybody to remember that police, my turnover in police is 9.4%. My turnover in fire is 1.9%. It doesn't mean that one organization's better than the other or anything like that, but I do have a bigger problem with retention of police than I do with fire.
All right. So, questions about the manager's current recommendation that's on the table? Mr. Drixx?
So, one thing that would be interesting to see is just the steps side by side, old and new, and the percentage differences. I just did old step eight versus new step seven, and it looks like a 4% increase. So, it would be interesting just to see, you know, in two columns with a percentage change. And the other question that I think I've heard is timing. So, when would the raises have become effective, old style and this style? Because some of the officers are saying, "We're ending up, you know, slightly worse off than we would have been under the old pay plan." And then, six months later or something, there's another adjustment that kind of is being included in the increase that we're describing here. So, I'd be interested to know the details of the timing.
Right. So, you're exactly correct in terms of the timing. The timing for fire is a little different than police. There's a common merit date of November for fire. But police, it's depending on when you graduated from the class, so it's all over the board. One of the things we'd like to do, and every time we have a conversation with the individuals from the Public Safety Pay Plan, we talk about step two, which, and I don't mean steps like this, but we have to, we have to take a new look at this system. And one of the things that I would like to do is see if we can get these merit dates pushed back to July. pushed back to July. Over time, you balance a budget by tinkering with stuff, and unfortunately, moving merit dates away from July to, to November, to February, to, to, to April saves you money, but it gets people, you know, not so happy. So I think I got you here, is that what we're trying to do, and, and part of the proposal is moving these merit dates up. I can't get them all the way to July in this one in terms of the limited resources that we have, but that is something that could help in some of the complaints we're hearing.
And, and is, is the calculation wrong that says that an old step eight now becomes a step seven and gets, has a 4% increase?
I, I don't know how you did it, I'm gonna-
I just looked at step eight on the first slide and the step seven on the second slide, which I think is, corresponds, because you dropped step one from the old hierarchy, right?
Right.
So, so I assume there's an equivalence between step eight on the old scale and step seven on the new scale. And when I look at the two numbers on your two slides, the difference between them is 4%.
So there's something that's a little quirky about in the proposal, how we adjusted the mid-step. So one step, when we dropped the first, the bottom step off, we did take then what would have been six, or seven, or five, or six, and we made it a double step. So I, I, when, when you say between those two, there are some changes. If you ask me, two through four, I'd say no, it's the same. If you ask me eight through, nine through 12, I'd say it's the same. But there's something about the middle step adjustment that we made that may be giving you that number.
All right.
Okay?
Okay, questions on the current recommendation? Does everybody get the proposed budget and what that would be in, in all of those? Okay, Mr. Newton?
Yeah, just so I'm clear, so this is covered by the roughly, was it like seven and a half, eight million that we're talking about out of the 1% property tax increase?
Yeah, this is covered within the resources in the current budget.
Got you.
Okay, so if we switch, yeah, keep going, please. Okay, so now here's an alternative proposal, and so I want to thank Ryan Bergman, who is new on the team, who has worked with HR, to think about ways that we could come up with an alternative proposal. Again, what we're trying to do that's different than the first proposal is address this parity piece. And Delane Honeycutt, thank you, and the whole team, okay? So we've been working hard on a, on a second proposal. So I try to do this into three bullets, I don't know why we were five, but I'm gonna use the three bullets, okay? So the, the first thing is, the difference here is that in police, it's just everybody's moving up two steps, okay? So, but remember, because some steps are 5% and some steps are two and a half percent, and some people have reached the top step, moving everybody two steps does not result in everybody getting the same salary increase over the course of that year. But, but that is, that's the key, that it's having two steps for all eligible police officers and sergeants. And the last, in the, in the current proposal, there wasn't any change for sergeants. And this would also move sergeants two steps. The other thing is that in this two-step process, you would have one step that's in November, and the other step being your, your, your current, on your merit date, okay? So with that said, that's part one. The second piece of this is to make a market adjustment, change it from 1.5% to 2%. So again, the person who would have made 5% instead of being at 6.5 would be 7. And I would also say that I, I would recommend the same thing for all of our hourly employees to move from 3% to 3.5%. That's later in this discussion, I want to separate the two, but, but it's something we said about everybody moving up 2% as opposed to the one and a half. And then to increase the top step in police officer by two and a half percent. And the reason that's important is because by moving everybody up two steps, those police officers who had reached the top step have no place to move. So it would only be one and a half percent. So by making that top step a double step, if you will, 5%, you would get four and a half as opposed to just the 2%, I'm sorry. And in order to keep this parity in place with police and fire, it adds a two and a half percent step to the firefighter two, and we maintain those other elements that were a part of the plan that was introduced. So if we flip to the next slide, that's a very busy slide, but here's the bottom line, is that we're leaving the steps as they are. We're not lopping anything off the bottom. If you're on step eight, you're on step eight in this one, then you go from eight to 10 in these, in these two steps. What I am, well, I'll leave that alone. And then the top step becomes yellow, it becomes a 5% step. Firefighters, the key is, which is a little different, I'm gonna just call it like it is, it, it adds a step, but that's okay with the conversations that we've had, adding a step is not as big of an issue with, with fire. It adds a step to the firefighter two and the firefighter engineer, and with captains, it increases all fire captains' steps by two and a half percent to maintain the spread between the engineer and the captain. So what does that look like on the next page? All right, so under the propose, what you have is that one, two-third column, thus roughly the six and a half percent for everybody over the course of the year. With this alternative, which I will say costs about a half a million dollars more, okay? So we tried to keep it with-
So let's go back, you said the, the alternative proposal is an additional half-
Half a million dollars.
Okay, got it.
And a lot of that has to do with this parity piece with fire, okay? So what the alternative does is that in those first four steps, it's this 12%, because you get the 2% adjustment plus a double step five and five, okay? Then, so Mr. Driggs, maybe this is kind of what we were talking about. So in, in some places, you're gonna get a, what was a, a 5% step, and then you add a two and a half percent step, and then you add 2% to it. And so we get those five, you get the nine and a half, and then you get the 7% steps because we're going five, excuse me, we're going 2% plus two and a half, plus two and a half, and that gets you the seven. The, the key with this one is that those 500 employees that have reached the top step in the previous scenario got six and a half. Those 500-plus employees in the alternative, they get four and a half. And to some extent, you, the reason why all of these changes only cost a half a million more is that because a lot of the cost is driven by the folks on the top step. But that's an alternative, I think on the next page it may talk about money. Okay, I'm sorry, so fire, very important. So fire, in the proposed budget, the increases range from one and a half percent to six and a half percent. In the, this alternative, there, nobody makes less than four and a half percent in terms of the increase. It ranges from four and a half to 7%, and maybe the next slide is the cost. Oh, I'm sorry, parity, parity stays the same. So the key with this, by not taking that top step of fire, I mean of police, and making that, having that ripple-through effect with what we're doing with, in that mid-step adjustment and some of the things we were doing in the proposal, you keep the parity the same. And so remember, this Plan B, and, or the second plan, sticks with recruitment, retention, but it also tries to make sure that the parity stays the same. And that is what I think you asked me to do, is to give you a second plan.
Okay, so let's ask informational questions about-
Oh, I'm sorry, the money.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
All the cost.
Okay, so what, what we did, and this is just, is just math, it is all of the pay actions in the budget related to police and fire, not fire trucks, not police vehicles, things like that. It was roughly 12.8 million. To do all of this would be, as I mentioned, a little bit more than a half a million more.
Okay, questions about the alternative? And I, I know it's the first time you're seeing it, I have Mr. Phillips and then Ms. Mayfield, and then Mr. Eggleston.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, previous to this, I guess under your recommended budget, you had indicated that your proposed property tax increase of a penny, that three-quarters of that would be devoted to the, I guess, public safety pay plan. Given your changes here, is that still the case?
Sure, so, yeah, so I, I was starting by saying, Mr. Phillips, that we build a budget, and you know this, so we build a budget, we start off by saying, and the reason I'm going to go through these steps is because there have been different ways of looking at how that penny pays for public safety versus other things. I will say that the way we start the budget is that we go in and we take out one times, we address any double counts and things of that nature. And so when you start to look at just the, the pay, and I don't even think we include the annualization with police, all in, I believe that is worth about 7.4 million dollars. So that's why we said it's the equivalent of what that three-quarters of a penny would be.
Okay. And my, my next question is, I know that we, this is the first time we're seeing it, have you received, I don't know if the rank-and-file officers had a chance to look at this. I know on your recommended budget, I mean, they didn't appear to be too pleased, but have we gotten any reaction yet, or is it too early right now on this alternative proposal?
Well, yes, I have gotten a reaction. So yesterday, as we presented to the public safety pay plan, many in fire were pleased. I will say that one of the best things I heard in there was somebody who had reached the top step in police, who said, under your proposal, I was getting six and a half, but now I'm only getting four and a half. But if that's good for the overall organization, maybe that's not so bad. I've gotten a few emails, and I'll tell you, the emails are across the board, okay? Some are, why are we even talking about parity? Some are, you know, you haven't done enough for police. Some are, hey, I've, I've reached the top step and this is not enough, and some are saying, thank you. So 24 hours in, it, it, I don't think there's a consensus. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Mr. Manager, if you had already gone over this before I got here, I apologize, but I have a couple of questions from the piece that I, that you reviewed so far. So I'm gonna go back a little bit. What you stated is that what you've noticed is the loss is between steps one and six. That's what we're seeing, and what we're looking at is a 9.4% turnover.
Yes.
But out there, one of the other big challenges that we have is the fact that a number of our trained officers go to the FBI or other areas. I asked a question months ago, and I still don't know, prior to us getting to this point, if it was answered regarding some communities, because I spoke to a couple of other electors in other areas, what they have in place, just like with school and any job, you have funding for training, but there's an expectation for you to work X number of years to offset those costs. And if you were to leave prior to that, there, they have instituted actual contracts stating that if you move on to another company prior to, let's say, step six, then the expectation of the cost of your training, how is that recouped by the city? I, I'm looking at these numbers, and we're heavily investing on that front end in that step one through six, and then we start seeing the lever, the leveling off, but it's our officers that's past that step six that are somewhat, it appears, are getting the short end of that stick. So I'm trying to reconcile, one, how are we protecting the city financially when we've made these financial investments and then those individuals go off to whatever else? Also, when we have new officers that we have coming in at this higher level or able to achieve this higher level quicker than our officers who are senior officers, I'm still trying to understand how we're balancing and justifying that, because there's a lot that can go wrong in that one through six. And even though we're saying that's the turnover, that turnover hasn't designated if they were released, if we don't talk about lawsuits or payout that the city has because of officer conduct. I'm not sure if this is just these individuals are leaving on their own accord, or if it has been incidences that have triggered them leaving. So that will also be helpful, to have a better understanding. If we're looking at the potential of an additional $552,000, but what we're trying to do is lure people in opposed to securing those officers who are senior officers.
So, so Ms. Mayfield, Councilmember Mayfield, I'm, we can give you the data on why each officer left over a period of time. We can, we have that data, we can get that to you.
But do you hear my concern around us top-loading that one through six? And the ability for our senior leadership, who has gone beyond step six, how are we truly ensuring that we're compensating them accordingly?
Yeah, I agree with you, and maybe you had come in a little bit later. I, I did mention that somewhere in this process, you start to look at, once you get past mid-range, what you have to look forward to is roughly half of what your salary adjustments were for the first six years, and then when you get to the, the top step, you basically just get that market adjustment. So we would like to look at this comprehensively next year, because it's, we're an hour into this, and it's just a strange way of compensating people.
So the other piece that I want to make sure that we're at least in the same book on, if not on the same page, is because some of us have had this conversation numerous years, and the idea of we're gonna do a better look and overview of this next year, we've gone through those next years. So that clear concern of top-loading on that front end, the one through six, without there being a clear clawback to protect the taxpayers and the residents of Charlotte, if that individual were to identify a new opportunity, and/or if they are released for whatever reason, or if they move to another, if there's something happens, there has to be some clawback to protect the taxpayers.
So, Ms. Mayfield, may I just follow up to that? I think the manager has clearly been talking about the difficulties we're having annually around compensation, and it's not just in our safety areas, but it is throughout our organization. And, you know, you have been through a number of these, you know, remember when everybody was paid on a certain date and then we went to merit dates? There's been, I would say, the continuing resol, evolution of how do you do human resources compensation policies that need to be updated? So I really like your idea of talking about, you know, the, where, how quickly do you get to the top value for your work, or do you lengthen it out? All of those are really valid considerations, but I think that my suggestion would be that every year this council approves a resolution around pay. It's included in your budget materials, it's an adoption of a resolution, and that resolution adopts whatever form of pay you have for this year's budget. I think what we've learned, and a lot of self-examination, is that we need this compensation study, and I would suggest that we begin to think about what that resolution says for giving some guidance for all of us and our expectations of what the manager would bring back next year. Now that's a huge task, it may not be 12 months, it may be 18, it may be that we want to segment off portions of it to be, however, but I know it is a big deal, and until we actually start stating things like, we see compensation as one of our principles of being the best employer, that we want to have both retention and parity, we've got to have some conversations around that. So my suggestion would be, begin to think about that resolution as being the vehicle that the manager can state, we're gonna undertake a compensation study for the organization, but we have to give some guiding principles to what that study would actually be, and that needs to come more quickly than not. So that was just a follow-up about what are we trying to accomplish as a council for our employees, but also making sure our resolution this year states clearly to our organization that we're gonna take a look at how we do it, and we're gonna get better at it. So I have, everyone I think wants to speak on this. So I have, everyone I think wants to speak on this topic, so I'm just going in the order that I saw people, and feel free to blend in and follow up as we need to, just checking in. So I had Mr. Eggleston next.
Mr. Manager, first, I appreciate, I and several others, that said we wanted to make sure that what we, by doing right by the police, we don't broaden the gap between police and fire, and I think that you have certainly made gains towards addressing that here. So thank you for that. Two questions. My first is, and I'll, I'll probably never fully understand, we talk a lot about firefighters and hours, and I'll probably maybe never fully understand, but I think a good metric for me to understand in the context of this conversation would be, and if someone wants to do the math and answer in a few minutes, that's fine, if you don't have it, on an annual basis, how many hours does a police officer working full-time, no overtime, versus a firefighter working full-time, no overtime, work in a calendar year? I think it's a relevant statistic, so I'd like to know what that is. Because obviously, that, I mean, these are salaries, but also, it obviously matters if someone's working a different number of hours over the course of a year. My second question is, we talk a lot about the Public Safety Pay Plan Committee, which is a mouthful. Where, how are those appointments made? What is that, who is that group composed of? I don't know much about that group, to be honest, so I, just from my own knowledge, I'm curious who those people are, how they're chosen, what kind of terms they serve, and what their charge is.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. So, City Manager, hey, just a couple of questions. One, does this new alternative proposal address, I guess, you mentioned our biggest issues, the 9.4 turnover, do we accomplish that goal in this new proposal?
Yes.
Secondly, I really appreciate you adjusting the parity, because I did not know it was that big of a difference between police at 5% and fire at 10%, and I think we all recognize they do a good job for us. The second one is, excuse me, my third question, was related to, at the beginning, salary now for our officers, will it begin at $44,362? Is that based on a four-year college degree or a two-year college degree?
Right, so, in the second proposal, the $44,362 would not include a two-year degree or a four-year degree, and I think with the four-year degree, it would still be under $50,000, maybe a 48,800.
It would go up to three, the level of three.
Yeah, as opposed to the $50,000 in the first proposal.
Got it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Winston?
Mr. Eggleston took part of my question, but I just wanted to speak to, Mr. Phipps asked about kind of feedback, and I actually spoke to a couple of police officers on the street this morning, which is completely anecdotal, but there were a couple of officers, don't know what step they were on, and a sergeant, they, some of them said that they were in the manager's office yesterday, and they, basically, I said hello, and they just said two words, "Option one, option one", so, completely anecdotal.
Do you know which option that is?
The first one that was proposed, the initial proposal.
The initial?
They think it-
The initial recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. From what I, from what they said was, their numbers, it basically comes out to be the same, it's just the way the money is moved around, and for them, it works better with option one.
Okay, Mr. Newton?
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. Manager and staff, for putting together this alternative proposal. Assuming that it is about the money, I think it does do a better job of addressing recruitment, retention, parity. I wanted to, so, seeing this number of about half a million dollars more on the back page to institute the alternative proposal, I just, I think back to what Councilmember Drix was saying earlier, are we going to be able, you know, to find a deletion or a revenue stream, and if we're talking about, you know, this potentially coming out of the 1%, you know, 1% tax increase proposal or amount, how would that impact our debt capacity for our housing bond? Would that even be on the table, from your perspective? Because I think, you know, if we're talking about taking half a million out of that particular, you know, that potential debt capacity, that could have exponential, you know, ramifications on a 50 million ask.
So, Councilmember Newton, so, I guess the way to approach it, maybe we're going into some of the other 19 items. So, on the operating side, with this proposal, it would be different than the capital improvement plan. So we'd leave the capital improvement plan intact, and for anything that's related to the capital improvement plan, my recommendation would be to swap out items for anything that's new, and then you keep the debt capacity where it was at the introduced budget. But if we move back over to the operating, one thing that's important is that if we start to think about making some cuts, cuts to programs, one of the things that I think would be important to note is that maybe 40%, I think it's 40% of the budget is police and fire to begin with. So it wouldn't make much sense to cut police and fire to put more money back into police and fire. So then you would start to further target, how would you go about making reductions? And one of the things that we could do is to have an across-the-board reduction through departments, and that across-the-board reduction, whether it's 1%, 2%, would create some capacity to do more things on the operating side. Outside of that, it would be literally going in and looking at the programs that the city provides, right? You know, we pick up trash, we pave roads, are there some programs that I think are important to us as a community, that may not be a core program that the city provides, but it does help us create the city that we want to be? So I'd say two ways of looking at the operating side from a reduction perspective, is across-the-board reductions, and whether or not you would exempt police and fire, and then are there some programs that we come in that we just no longer find?
Okay, is that a follow-up to-
Yeah.
Mr. Winston?
So, what you just said, what's potentially on the table, or are you saying it's not on the table, was for instance, if we need to find new ways to pay for police salaries, that we could look at the rest of the police operating budget and find out where we can make reductions in those costs to-
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying the opposite, is that, right now, so much of our general fund budget, not the $2.6 billion, but the general fund budget, roughly $700 million, a big bulk of it is police and fire.
Yeah.
And so, if there are further reductions, one of the starting points is, what are we going to take off the table from the reductions? And one way of looking at this is, would you begin by removing police and fire from any discussion about further reductions?
Why would we remove them?
Because you're adding to them? And you don't have to, I mean, it makes it easier to spread the reductions out, but sometimes you exempt certain departments from reductions, and you don't have to exempt police and fire.
I would just imagine, we're talking about increasing, for instance, take-home vehicles and stuff like that, why would we not look at that first, to pay for the police officers, as opposed to paying for police vehicles for them to take home?
You could do that.
But I think what he's saying is, you can choose some of those, or you could say, out of the $400 million general fund budget, exempt 40% of that, so that leaves you what, Gordy, out of that, whatever, I'm not very good at math. So whatever that is, then you can take it across the board from other places, and I also think that then the manager has discretion with these, to say, "These are areas that I think shouldn't be reduced or can't be reduced." I mean, you know, you're in a small department, you've got three people, you're gonna pay those three people, but in the larger departments, they'd have some flexibility to work with that, but he's offering two ideas, both of those are our choice. You okay?
Yeah.
All right, so, Mr. Newton, did you finish?
Yes.
Okay, and then Mr. Bakari?
Thank you, Mayor. So, let me start by just kind of recapping what I heard, I'm just gonna do, officers up to step 12, my first set of comments and questions to you. So, it looks to me like, if you oversimplify, if you're a new recruit, all the way to-
May I ask, can we go to the slide that shows the one, two, current, the-
Yeah.
Go to the, so as we're talking through that, that might be helpful for all of us.
Yeah, great call, Mayor. So, if you're a new recruit to, and the reason I'm doing this also is because it's really hard to understand what it is, and who you are, and if, what you would get. So tell me if this is correct, you're a new recruit up to an officer that's maybe close to four years in, you are getting a 12% increase. If you are either a five-year officer, around the five-year mark, or 11-year, you're getting 9.5%, and you have identified that those are two areas from a retention perspective that are important. You've identified in the first bucket, that's an important recruitment element, and if you're an officer that's somewhere between six and 10 years in, or 12 years in, you're getting 7%.
That's right.
Fair enough?
Yes.
So that, plus retirement healthcare, that you've now brought back on the table for this group, plus take-home car, which we heard is interesting, and some other little things here and there, you know, based on all the conversations I had during Police Week, during my ride-along, I got to ask people actual specific questions, hear their feedback, Mr. Manager, to me, that seems extraordinary. That really does, and I think many of them, that I've anecdotally spoken to, would feel that is an extraordinary statement in putting our money where it matters. So I think that's a job incredibly well-done. Now, step 13, right, our topped-out, or our top-step officers, previously, we were proposing 6.5%. We've brought that down to 4.5%, and inside that 4.5%, I think if I'm seeing it right, that's 2% now, and 2.5% later, November.
November, yes.
So, the other thing, which I think made this a creative approach, with what you're able to do for the limited financial impact you made it, and the stat I think I heard you say earlier, is 35%, a little more than a third of our officers are in this top step, right? So I guess my first question is, what do you say to that over a third of our officers that are in that step, where you may have heard anecdotally, some of them say, "You know what, it's the best thing for the force, great", I've heard some others say that maybe it feels a little bit of a slap in the face, where not only are, is that where a morale issue is, and, you know, this group of officers, I heard in my ride-along, were ones that, they had seen the, you know, CNPD as an organization in a different era, where you roll it around and everything was, you know, you know, not the level of scrutiny, of public pushback, of really the challenges they go through there. So I think their morale is extra-impacted, because they knew it differently than these officers who've maybe only been around five years, and that's the new normal for them. So I guess my question there is, one, they might feel extra-impact from this, from a morale perspective, and two, theoretically, these are some of our best officers. These are the ones that should be, be, serving as a role model for some of the newer folks. So how do you tell them that this is, maybe it's not extraordinary, but how is it more than just status quo? How do you explain that to them?
Sure, so, Councilmember Bakari, I did get a very similar response, in that it was, under the proposed budget, it was 6.5%, and now I've lost 2%. So there are a couple of things that can occur, and the first one may not seem great, okay? But the first thing is that, absent this, the increase would have been 1.5%. With, whether it's the proposed budget at 6.5, or the second proposal at 4.5, it's more than 1.5, and my understanding is the entire 4.5 is in July, as would have been the 6.5 would have been in July for that step, top step. There is, so, to keep the parity in place, there could be some type of bonus, right? Some type of bonus that makes that 4.5 more than 4.5, and it keeps the parity in place. The key is, going beyond that 4.5 throws us out of this parity conversation. So, what's different between that 4.5 and the 6.5, I think is $1.2 million?
Just for these guys, it's $900,000.
$900,000, about a million bucks, $900,000 is the difference between the 6.5 for 13 and the 4.5 for 13. I would caution that any discussion around that $900,000 that's baked into step 13 creates the parity problem again. So if there is a one-time bonus or one-time payment, it would bring it back to 6.5, but there would be another $900,000.
Is there, is there a longer, beyond fixing everything in the world in one year, in one budget view, especially for those top-step officers, where if they, like our teachers who are experiencing much of the same thing, but when you look at the last six years, progress has been made, are we where we need to be? No. Is there a story like that for our officers at this top step that might help with this?
So absolutely, there are two things that are going on. One is, let's not forget the Senior Police Officer Program, that would be implemented this year, that would still be able to allow those individuals to get 5%. The other thing, and I'm not doing a good job with it, I just don't agree with the plan, and some of us is just changing the plan.
Yeah.
And I think if we change the plan, to the mayor's point, I've already gotten some comments to say, "Okay, FIRE wants two steps next year", so it's the step thing, and it's something that happened to somebody else, and let me do it, as opposed to just say, "How do we pay people?", right? And all of that, it's not just the salary, it's vehicles, it's equipment, it's retirement, and I would like for us to be able to, to Ms. Mayfield's point, I'm not previous folks, I'm gonna do it. If I tell you I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it, and we're gonna look at compensation.
So, here's a series of requests, in a particular order, because you can't do them all, and probably won't be able to. One, as you go back in these next week or two, to figure out what's going on, please figure out how to do all of this, not thinking of revenue/tax increase. Look, my request would be, how can we internally reprioritize to do it? So whether that is the recommendation I provided, which is, "Cut the hell out of stormwater", which is not gonna be easy, but that is something we can do, this is something we must do. And you could cut stormwater, and that has already shown to not have support, so I will not stay on that, but you can do that, you could do that, and fund that extra $900,000 and bring them back up to 6.5%, and it becomes extraordinary for everyone. So there's one option. Another option, if that's not viable, which it seems like it may not be, not because it can't work, but because there's not political support for it, perhaps you can go-
Mr. Bakari, I want to say, I'm not sure that we know the definition of political when you use that word, in the context.
Sorry.
I don't, I'm just saying, I'm just, I want us to be careful in words matter.
Yes, they do, I'm sorry, Mayor. Let me rephrase that. When I brought this up in the last Budget Adjustments Meeting, it did not get the needed votes to be considered.
Right.
That's what I mean, and where those votes came from don't matter, because it's good fiscal policy. So, if you can't figure that out, the secondary option I'd like you to consider, if possible, is, how can you come up with maybe a Plan C? Because clearly, Plan B makes more sense for recruitment and retention needs. Clearly, it makes more sense for officers from newly hired all the way to step 12. It's the 33, 35% in step 13 that are causing the challenge. So is there something a little more you could do, either by rebalancing, or what's extraordinary to maybe kind of account for that? I know that's gonna be challenging, but something of that nature, so that there's an option where they feel like they got a little bit of the extraordinary for now, but there's a long game in mind for them, and then-
Mr. Bakari, if you would hold that, to put it out on the table for six votes, I think the manager's made a recommendation, he's brought an alternative, if you want to do that, it would take six votes to move it forward under our process.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. So those are my comments, hopefully, one, great job, steps one through 12, great job, 13, almost there.
All right. Oh, I lost my page. I believe that I had Dr. Harlow next.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, appreciate the alternative here. I know you started down the path for just recruitment and retention, and then the rabbit hole gets deeper, and it's about parity, and then it could be about total compensation and all of that. I'd say, for the sake of this budget, and how far down the rabbit hole we already are, um- um, I, I have, I do have a couple of questions. So, number one, on the, on the last charts around the, the second proposal, the alternative, um, we're not, we didn't see anything, and I, and maybe it's included, uh, but did we, did we lose the incentive pay with?
No.
Okay, so that's still there. Okay.
Yes.
Um, and then, secondly, uh, to Ms. Mayfield's point a little bit, and, and this may not be something we can do in this budget cycle, but yes, evaluating the value of our training. Uh, I just wanna kind of cosign on that, and I think that's, that's very important, uh, to understand the investment we're making and, and, and that being expectation somehow being set. Um, call it clawbacks, call it whatever, um, that we, we look at the value of those incentives. And then, you know, possibly from a total compensation standpoint, so we're not always, every year, dealing with, how do we just, you know, tick the needle up a little bit more, um, for increases all the time beyond the, uh, the traditional merit and market adjustments? You know, what other incentives could be applied on the front end, um, that, that bring more value, um, that still equal d, increase in dollars in people's pockets, um, but it's not an ongoing type of scenario? Uh, I just think that we're, we're riding a slippery slope here, um, not just with the Public Safety Plan, um, but now we've, we've a little bit, we've exposed ourselves a little bit, right? Um, we're a little bit of sitting ducks here, and I, let's not be surprised, next year's budget season, when, if, if and when another department comes knocking and saying, "Well, all we have to do is show up at public forums." Um, and so, I want us to, to really evaluate on an internal level, what are we doing within the next calendar year, uh, or 12 months internally, from a human resource standpoint, to address some of these things? So, we're not sitting here talking about the same thing, just with a different chart and a different, um, a, a different, uh, you know, department up there. Uh, beyond, beyond that, this, I, I didn't see a, uh, comparison, the, the best chart was, was this one, but then, lastly, we didn't see a comparison of the current parity, the proposed parity, and the alternative parity. Um, and so, I didn't know that this parity existed either, like Mr. Mitchell said, but to have 5% difference in starting pay and top pay in the current, uh, in the current plan, and then it moves to 10% in the, in the proposed plan, there's no numbers, at least, I can't calculate them in my head, what they are for the alternative point.
So, this, this is it. It keeps us at the five and five.
Did we have, I didn't know if we had last page?
You keep looking.
So, so...
Okay, but it, but that, this answers my question. So, it, it keeps the, it keeps the parity where it is. That's, that was the point. Okay, I just didn't see that. Um, so, I appreciate that. And I'm, still doesn't get the alternative portion of it. Uh, but nonetheless, this is it here, so thank you. Um, and, uh, just, la, last quick point. So, I, I mentioned it a little bit, just thinking of a, a total comp, compensation, you know, everyone wants that base pay to, to look good and feel good, because that gets chopped off twice a month, um, and we annualize it out over 12 months. But there, there, there is a lot of value.
We pay weekly.
Oh, weekly, in that case, well, good for them. Even better. Yeah, goo, good for them. So, uh, I...
We get paid monthly there, yeah.
But, but looking at, looking at, you know, re, really evaluating a, a total compensation package, whether that's including retirement healthcare and, and the police cars, take homes, and all of that stuff, uh, there's value in all of that. Um, you can't always attach a dollar number to it, but if you try to do that and, and add that into whatever the true, actual salary is, I think we'd make a much better argument. We don't allow anyone else to run with it, because we, we can shape that a lot better. Um, and my argument to folks who say that that doesn't count or matter, it, that, that's added value. Um, and we, we have to be able to stand, stand strong and say that. Otherwise, we're, we're gonna deal with this all the time. Um, so, but, but I do think this is, this is a good job. I think it's a tough battle, right, to say, "Hey, how do we deal with recruitment and retention? How do we deal with parity that we didn't even know really existed?" Um, and I, I, I can, I can get behind that, um, this, this alternative plan.
All right. Mr. Driggs?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment briefly, one about firefighters. Uh, the manager, you said this, and I've said it before, there's no question that the work they do is essential for safety and is dangerous. We all understand that. The fact is, we have to also be responsive to market realities. And if we're not able to staff our police department, because, partly because of a lot of the social adversity that they now face, their working conditions have deteriorated, I think we need to be sensitive to that. So, I appreciate the work you've done. And I'd also say, from a big-picture standpoint, in essence, what you're, you have two options in responding to the police requests. One is, uh, throw more money at it, and the other is improve the satisfaction they get from the money you're spending. So, what I see you doing, and I really appreciate this, is trying to deliver more value to the police by being smarter about where you allocate the money. Put it in the places where the shortages are the greatest, or give them things that they'll appreciate, like the use of the car. Very smart. I think the conversations we've had with the officers have been troubled, in part, by the fact that they came to us and they said, "We want 15%." And I think what they thought that meant was a 15% increase in our budget for the police on top of probably what they were getting. So, we were so many miles apart. I mean, that was a $30 million ask, or whatever it was. And, uh, so, we all knew that we were gonna use our best efforts, but that it was unlikely we'd be able to do all of that. What has happened, I think, though, is in your proposals, they haven't been able easily to put what you're offering in the context of the way they were thinking. So, I hear them struggling to try and come down to an increase like the 15% number. In other words, this is what we were going to get, this is what we're getting instead. How big is that difference? And I notice even on your, uh, Pay Plan Proposals page, the last page here, where it says, "Annualize the 2018 Pay Actions is $2 million." I assume that would not include a normal, traditional step increase for the fiscal year 2019. Is that right?
It should be the previous year, whenever we annualize something.
Just, just take onboard for the full year what you did in the prior year, and that's $2 million. And now you have the 2019 Pay Actions, which I assume are not annualized, but also reflect only the impact on our 2019 budget, based on the points in time at which those increases become effective.
Including police and fire.
Uh, police and fire, correct. So, uh, what I'm wondering is, what would have been the increase if we had simply stuck to our existing plans? And what I'm getting at is I'm trying to show, how much more money are we actually spending? And I think it's actually a substantial number, uh, but I think it's a selling point. So, we can demonstrate extra effort by saying, and, and you've just added a half a million to it with your latest proposal, we can demonstrate the extra effort by saying, compared to what you would've had, the total amount that we're putting into compensation benefits and, and other personnel-related expenses is this much. And, and that is the, uh, the response to the situation we heard. It's not necessarily the last response, but that combined with the efforts that you've made to optimize the delivery of our investment, uh, according to the needs of the police, as you've heard them, and I, I'm hearing similar things. So, I think we're very close about that. Might be easier to kind of sell it. So, I'm supportive of, uh, your, your newest proposal. I think that does kind of move us closer to being responsive to what a lot, a lot of people have asked for. There is an issue about the, uh, the senior people, and I'm estimating it would cost another million and a half to $2 million to get them back to 6.5%. I don't know whether you've done that math, or whether you think that number is accurate. But, uh, it appears that, you know, in part, you were able to limit the half million by reapportioning. Right?
Right.
And, uh, so, uh, I haven't had a chance to talk to senior officers about that, but, uh, I do, once again, applaud the effort, you know, within resource constraints, to be as responsive as possible to the needs of as many officers as possible. So, again, I will support this. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. Manager, just a quick question, I think, does, um, and you might have addressed it with Mr. Mitchell's question, but if we are, if, if the police department is able to, um, fill those vacant spots, does that, is that accounted for in the budget? I think, how many are there? 170 vacant spots for officers right now? Was that what it was?
So, Mayor Protem, I, I believe we funded the vacant positions. So, yeah, the assumption is...
Okay, so this is accounted for?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I have Ms. Azmira.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, I like what you have done to address the recruitment and retention, uh, among our police officers. Um, and, uh, I like how you have the change in parity from current to alternative plan. Uh, but I did not see anywhere, or I might have missed it, the chart that you have for police from step one to 12, or one to 13, from current to proposed. Do you have that for FIRE?
Yes, it would be this. So, um, the proposed budget for FIRE, the range of increases are from 1.5% to 6.5%. Under the second proposal, uh, no one would make less than 4.5% increase, and it goes all the way up to seven. A piece of that in the second proposal is the adjustment to the steps are 2% as opposed to 1.5%.
Okay, I think that answers my question. Uh, thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, also, I'd like to remind my colleagues, stormwater is an enterprise fund, and we cannot use those dollars to do anything with the, uh, so we cannot cut that, um, to pay for this.
Okay, so I think everyone has had a chance to speak on this, on the pay plan. Do you wanna follow up to, on the pay plan?
Yeah, I just, well, I just wanted to clarify that there was a discussion at the last meeting about fee decreases, balancing out tax increases, and so that what, no one was proposing we use enterprise fund dollars, uh, towards pay plan.
Okay. So, has everyone, all right, everyone has had a chance to speak. Would anybody else like to speak again? Mr. Phipps?
Yeah. Um, I understand that, uh, aren't we gonna embark on a compensation study or whatever in the next few months? So, so even though they were trying to look at this in terms of the context of this imminent budget that we have to prepare, this, this global compensation plan will be taking a look at all employee-based plans. So, I think that would be the environment through which I think that we could really, um, evaluate our best alternatives on a go-forward basis, so as to come up with a, uh, something that we can all be proud of, instead of just, you know, trying to carve out something to satisfy our immediate needs, that that study should be something we all should look forward to.
So, the manager has actually proposed an alternative for the pay for police and FIRE to accomplish several goals, um, that have been set. One, many that you've talked about and already discussed, among police and FIRE, police, um, market forces, all of those things. And he has actually proposed that the additional 552 be a part of an across-the-board reduction of the remaining operating funds, which are generally the large, the administrative and management, as well as, um, solid waste and transportation. Those are the major ones. But giving his discretion, um, to come back to us with, um, a plan, he would propose that he do that, either by cutting that across the board, or if we would like to actually propose some changes to it. The question, the question I have for you now, are you prepared to, um, address the alternative proposal and getting us determination if there are six votes to move forward with this? And then having a discussion about putting that to the side and coming back when we can talk about how we would do any changes, and give you some time to think through if it's across the board, or if there are particular programs that you would suggest that we look at? It looks like we're leading towards a June 4th meeting, at least. So, um, I have Mr. Newton, and then Mr. Eggleston, and then Mr. Driggs.
I'm ready to move forward to a straw vote on this. Now, having said that, I think that there's also another alternative. We had mentioned about, uh, last, well, our last budget readjustment meeting, talk, you know, we had talked about kind of biting the bullet here, and maybe even, you know, we have a 1% tax, uh, uh, increase proposal, maybe...
One cent, not 1%.
Oh, I'm sorry, 1 cent, 1 cent, uh, it actually may be pushing that up a little bit more. I think you can, you know, we can maintain operational costs in that regard, if we were to do that, and then also maintain many of the other items that we find to be essential inside the current budget.
Okay, I'll start keeping a list of those ideas, as I hear other people say them, and we'll come back. So, um, Mr. Eggleston?
I'll pass on my question, but just to clarify what Mr. Newton said, make sure I understood you and the manager, right. You're saying, "We're now voting that, yes, we like the manager's new pay plan idea, and then on June 4th, the options will be either an across-the-board cut, an additional tax increase, or a more precise cut in certain departments." Is that right?
I am, I'm always an eternal optimist. I just mentioned that if we don't finish up, we've got a lot more to do by the 4th, so let's see where we are at the end.
We're not voting on where the money comes from, we're voting...
Not right now. We are just saying, six votes to move this forward, and then we're gonna have a list, and I'm, of deletes or changes in terms of revenue, or increases. And I think Mr. Newton just said, to do the 500, a calculation of how much would that be for a tax increase? And I think it's like 1/10 of a penny? Is that right? Something like that? But somebody with better math skills than I should have that.
Yes.
How much is it? One?
1/20 of a penny.
1/20 of a penny?
I think.
Yeah, it's $10 million, and a half a million is a 20th.
So, um, I have, um, Ms. Driggs next, and then Ms. Mayfield.
I'm interested in that later conversation, but I, as I said, I, I support this. I just wanted to be sure that you're comfortable that from the police, from the officer's standpoint, your newest proposal is more responsive than the one before, that you, that you feel that you kind of, that we're not gonna have people come back, and, and as Councilmember Winston said...
And not have people come back. Really, really, you really, Mr. Driggs, not have people come back?
So, uh, Councilmember Driggs, the, I guess, 7:30 call I got this morning from HR is that, uh, 2/3 of it is good, 'cause it's obvious, you know, the, the first tier is making more, the second, it, it's, it's step 13, so...
Keep all of the people happy some of the time, and some of the people all the time, but you can't keep all the people happy all the time, right?
I think we've heard that before.
I think that's Lincoln, right?
So, I'm gonna go back, and then I have Ms. Mayfield, and then Mr. Bakari.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Manager, this is a question for clarification. And Mayor, also for you, what you're asking for right now is whether or not there's enough support for us to move forward with this potential proposal, to get more information. But the challenge that I have is that the last budget meeting, I specifically asked for, at this budget meeting, for us to have that comparison, 'cause we keep talking about these dollars. And I specifically asked for us to look at, and for staff to bring back. So, New York has one of the best pay plans out there. Other communities, how many other communities have a triple, triple, AAA bond rating, which we do? And the financials, have any of them faced any long-term, because they've done it. Others have figured out how to pay officers a lot more. Others have figured out how to protect residents and have the clawbacks, so that you're not training the best of the best for them to go off, and we get stuck with whoever we're stuck with. But I specifically asked for us to bring back those numbers. Now, I do recognize I ran, I came in 30 minutes late, and I'm still on vacation mode anyway, so I'm technically not here. But I'm trying to figure out, if we're just adding on to say, again, next time, bring us this additional information, at what point do we get these answers back that address the questions that come up, so that when we are ready to raise our hands for a vote, we know exactly what we're voting on? Because we keep kicking this can down the road, and today, we're getting a whole new set of numbers that's based off of some questions, but there were other questions that were asked that are not reflected in here.
Um, I think...
So, can I get that answer?
Yes, that we're, whether or not the question, I think...
So, uh, Councilmember Mayfield, it's, um, really not a two-week, I guess, assessment, but I will tell you right now, at the first glance, it is, we don't compare favorably with other AAA-rated cities when it comes to total compensation. What I've asked staff to do is unpack what total compensation means. So, so, we, we don't. If I gave it to you right now, I could give you a chart, and we would not compare favorably. But we'd like to know what these things mean, and what are some of the trade-offs that are in some of the compensation packages.
So, I think even that would have been helpful, to say that right now, what we're learning is we're looking unfavorable, but we're still researching to identify what exactly is included, the other areas, 'cause also, we have to have a real conversation. We are a Dillon Rule state. So, there are some things that we have the legal ability to do on our level. There are some things that other communities are able to do, that it would take us legislative authority to be able to do. So, if we're gonna have a factual conversation, we can't have it based on partial... So if we're going to have a factual conversation, we can't have it based on partial information. We have to have a real conversation of, these things sound great for the television and for a soundbite, but we don't have the legal ability to do some of these things. And let's just be transparent and say that.
That's what we're working through, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so you asked what I was trying to ask. Today, you have to have six votes to move something forward. All I was asking is, out of these, you have the manager's recommendation, and you have an alternative presented today. I was trying to determine if there were six votes on the alternative to put it on the list that would go from, instead of being 19 to 20.
Can we just take a vote?
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'm just, I just wanted to make sure Ms. Mayfield understood what we were talking about, because we have 19 other items to review, so it'd be 21, sorry. Okay? So if, I'm just asking if you're prepared. I have Mr. Bakari who would like to speak as well, though.
Yeah, I just want to add two items to the straw vote to be also considered along with the other item I think you have on there now. One is, and I do this very hesitantly and politely, and, and just in case there's interest in doing it, because I don't want anyone to think the manager's Plan B here isn't great work, and I, and I don't want to sour anybody from that, so. One, I'd like to see if there's a straw vote to, to, to do something additional for step 13. Doesn't have to be all the way, but if there's something that's there, I'd love to see that before the kind of pure Plan B vote, just in, just in case there's support for it, for him to go back. And then two would be to issue him the guidance of doing this, whether it's across the board, giving a percentage cut, or looking specific at some areas, not raising taxes to do so.
We're going to come back on the revenue side after we get all of the expenses in this grouping done.
Got it.
I think, so Mr. Bakari has made a suggestion. Is there anyone that would second that suggestion? Okay, with that, we'll go back to whether or not we have six votes for the alternative presented, which is the additional as presented by the manager. Can we just see a show of hands to see that? I have one, two, three, four? Okay. Everyone except one, well, yeah, I couldn't see, it's unanimous for that. All right, so now we've got 21. So, Mr. Manager, let's go back and see, now we have 21 items of budget adjustments that have been submitted, and we've got names by them, and we've probably tackled one of the toughest parts of it, I have to admit, but there are three other categories that you have besides pay?
Mayor.
I'm sorry, can I finish? Can you go back to your original beginning point, not the Memorial Stadium? We don't want to talk about that today.
Mm-mm.
So, let's go to the category. So the manager just went through public safety adjustment. We talked about, and I'm just going to say, on the pay parity for all employees, we've talked about addressing that in our pay resolution, that we would tackle that in a systematic way, in a way that most corporations do this work, and we've heard lots of suggestions about that. But I'm going to ask if there's any disagreement on pay parity being a part of the resolution that we adopt to proceed to look at it in the upcoming fiscal year. Is that, can I have a hand, can I have hands up to support that effort? The effort, the question is, under ongoing budget adjustments, pay parity for all employees, would that be okay to put in our resolution to proceed with that study next year? All support for that? Okay, we've got more than six on that, okay. All right, so-
So let me ask a clarifying question, Mayor. Because again, we keep having these conversations about studying for next year, and every year the budget cycle is what it is, and it's a short period of time that we have these conversations. So are, is the recommendation to not look at this fiscal budget that we are attempting to prove right now, moving this until the 2019, 2020 budget?
I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm trying to get clarification, because we, we're saying to do more research on it for next year, but what does that do for this year's conversation around pay?
It keeps the manager's recommended budget as is, as he, with the only amendment being that that he just, we just discussed.
So that means the questions, again, that were asked at the last budget meeting, that specifically asked, where are we around sanitation as well as cats?
We-
Conversation that we're saying we're pushing that off to have a deeper dive into it.
I would say, if that's not on that list, then we did not vote to do that, and I don't see sanitation or cats on that list, except in the parity discussion. And that was as, to move forward with it in the next upcoming year. Now, I'm, that's where we landed, and my-
Okay.
Okay?
Then we're saying we're making a conscious effort, that we're saying we're pushing this conversation off with the hopes that next year is going to be addressed.
I'm going to say this, if we adopt a resolution outlining that we're going to do some work, and it has enough definition around that work in the resolution, and I would like to ask the manager to bring that back to us on the 4th of what that resolution would look like and say, because we're going at the end. But I really see this as a, one of the most important discussions that we have. Everybody around this table knows that 40 percent of our payroll is in police and fire and community safety. We haven't even calculated, I can't remember who brought up, looking at the total compensation. We also have other areas that have been identified, and if we are going to be a city that is going to attract the very best in an innovative way from the very best people that are working whatever area we're in, it has to be addressed in a study that is ordinarily done in most businesses and local governments in at least every three to five years. We have not done that. We have piecemealed every one of these decisions since I've been here on council, so that makes it a total of five years. So we can't continue to piecemeal. I think we're agreeing that we have to come back and actually do a compensation study that considers what we want to do, and that's what, it's not simply putting it off to next year, it's actually directing our resources into making this happen so that we would have it for next year's budget. That's the way I look at it. Mr. Manager, if you disagree with me, if we're just going to come back with another step system, I mean, we can step this world out, and the market will catch up at some point. I mean, you know, that's not going to happen. All right, but you know, we, we know that there's market rates for jobs. We have not looked at market rates for our jobs in a while, so if we're going to be seri- I'm saying this because it has to be a serious effort, otherwise it's just another wing it, and I just don't think we can do that. Mr. Driggs?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I think this is a policy conversation that we need to have outside of the budget process. However, I do agree with Councilmember Mayfield, there have been many occasions when we got into trash and other subjects, and we said later, and Stormwater several years in a row, and it didn't happen. So I just hope that somehow we're emphatic enough about the fact that we want to have a basis for new policy the next time we look at pay. Thank you.
Okay, so that's where we are with the resolution. Okay, so the next item on there is the question that was addressed under offering an incentive compensa- I'm sorry.
I just want to, if I could, I wanted to make a motion just to take a five-minute recess, just to kind of, we were in a real deep dive, and before we kind of get into that, I think we need to just chill for a second.
What? Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break. That's one minute after two.
Thank you.
Thank you.